Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 13, 2021 Regular School Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with regards to collective bargaining groups, personnel matters, and ongoing litigation.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. DeMoss, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene. Tonight's October 13, 2021, school committee meeting at 6:33 PM. Before we start this evening's meeting, I would like to ask everyone in attendance and those at home to please take a second to acknowledge the passing of two very fine Tewksbury gentlemen that unfortunately passed due to cancer this week. One was Mr. Nicholas Romano. His daughter Anne Busky Romano is a fellow colleague, served on the school committee years ago here in the district. And the other guy is Mark Donovan, 30-plus year educator and coach over at Chorstein Tech. Tremendous service to the kids of this community. So with that, I'd ask us all to please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Obviously, our thoughts and prayers are with both the Romano and the Donovan family and friends during this difficult time. Tonight's October 13, 2021, regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or at youtube/tewksberrytv.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would like to ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, going to ask our esteemed guest, Mr. Jack Stadman, if he would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jack. And you still have the floor, sir.
Of course. Thank you for having me back once again. Always a pleasure. Our Tewksbury High School DECA team has, as usual, been hard at work planning this year's Megan McCarthy Fashion Show. Representatives will be going around to local businesses to collect sponsorships as well as raffle items. The TMHS Drama Club is working on their latest production of Clue. Both cast and crew have been working diligently to bring yet another unforgettable performance to this year's stage. The National Honor Society has completed their Hurricane Relief Fund Drive. All donations are being packaged and shipped to the families in need. NHS members are also selling Tewksbury umbrellas. If you're interested in purchasing one, please find an NHS member for more details. The Student Council is holding their weekly meetings on Thursday mornings. They have announced their new spirit days for next week. Check the library and posters posted around the school for more information. In addition, the Student Council is also hosting a Dinosaur the Teacher Fund. If any students would like to see their favorite teacher show up to school in a full dinosaur costume for the whole day, I repeat, the whole day, buy tickets to vote for that teacher at lunch. As usual, the morning update is still broadcasting live every morning on YouTube. You can tune in on YouTube to check in on the latest in-school updates. The class of 2022 is collecting dues again every week at lunch. Everyone must pay their dues, which is $10 per year, to attend prom and all senior events in the future. Earlier this month, at the townwide cleanup, multiple clubs could be seen around Tewksbury helping to pick up trash and make the town a cleaner place to live. Nicely done to all those who participated. And last but certainly not least, on October 30, the high school is hosting the annual Apple Fest once again in the gym. Many clubs will be selling their different types of Tewksbury merchandise. If you're looking for items such as Tewksbury winter hats, Tewksbury shirts, sweatshirts, or even sweatpants, come down to support your local high school clubs. And that is it for today.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. And I'd just like to echo the thank you to all the people that went out, as well as the school personnel on that townwide cleanup. It's always a great day. I know they gather hundreds and hundreds of bags of trash, and it certainly makes a difference in the community. So thank you for that report, Jack. With no presentations, that brings us to Citizens Forum this evening. Is there any wish to speak to any agenda items? You can do so at the podium.
Is that agenda items?
Yes.
To speak of anything at all, or?
As long as it's on the agenda, Mrs. Noel. There's no mass on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
So my name's Rob Hanley. My son is at North Street School, third grade. Well, I had two items I wanted to talk about. One main thing, basically an overall thing, is I don't know if I know or we know what the parents in this community really want. I would really like to see surveys on very important things that affect all of us, sent out to parents and parents only, not administrators, not, you know, distant relatives, just the parents. You can track the results. This is very basic stuff with basic questions. What I really want is, I'll get to that in a second, but that's one thing that we have to do. I want parent surveys. There's so much going on, so many divisive things. I know you don't want a big thing here, a big issue, but why don't we just find out? It might not change anything. It probably won't. But like, at least we know if you guys are doing the will of the parents in this community. And we'll know where everybody stands. Next thing, parents should be able to and have the right to be able to tour these schools at any point, or at the very least at some point. I mean, the idea that you're sending your children to school and can't go in to that school ever, really, is strange, to say the least. I mean, it's unacceptable, in my opinion. Everybody goes into every store, and I don't have to go through all that. But that's, to me, should go without saying. We have the kids, you've got to be able to look around, you know, see what the environment, get a feel for what they're going through. Forget about Zoom, forget about the parent-teacher Zoom, this and that. Come on, please. We all live our lives. Let's be honest. So those are the two things I want to see. I want the surveys. I want to be able to tour the school, not at the drop of a hat, but let's be reasonable, please. I mean, we've had a lot, we've dealt with a lot. We've given in a lot. Give us something. Help us out. That's it.
Thank you for your input.
Dorine Hailey. I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to bring to your attention that under your own policy, under public comment, it says individuals may address topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment, or items within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. So hopefully, you will let her speak, but that's up to the chair. But that's your own policy.
I have the policy in front of me. Thank you. And I did let the gentleman speak.
I thought she wanted to speak. The policy says B.
I want to speak about masks, Mrs. Hailey. Thank you. We've heard about masks. We have litigation about masks. This is not a Q and A to come in here because people have specific personal instances. It's not. It's a place for you to come and comment. That was completely appropriate, what Mr. Hailey had to say. We'll take it, and we will respond back to him appropriately.
I didn't ask about him. I thought she was asking to speak. But under your policy, B E D H.
She asked to speak about masks.
Right. But under your policy, B E D H E, that's what it says, under your own policy. So is this policy not in effect?
I have the policy right in front of me. Thank you.
Which, do you have this policy?
Mm-hmm.
B E D H E? Then why does it say that you can speak on the bottom, under five? No, is it under five, under three? Sorry. I couldn't see. Under three. It says anything under the scope of the school committee. So they can't speak? So we're not using this policy? That's what I'm asking you.
We are using the policy. Yes, we are.
But we're not abiding by it?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I don't think so.
Yes, we are. Seeing no one else, I will turn it over to our clerk.
So good evening. Erin Hud. I live on 67 Catamount Road. It's nice to see those people that voted to mask all of our kids two months ago are wearing masks tonight. I guess maybe you figured out what a hypocrite you look like, so that's nice to see. I have to say, usually when I come here, I'm very respectful of this process and the opportunity to speak to all of you, especially our administrators, respect your position. I know this is a really tough time to be in your position. And I usually spend a lot of time looking at data, gathering research, gathering my thoughts, trying to help you all understand how my child personally is impacted by the decisions that you make, whether it be masks, or anything, all the decisions that you make. But it's really been clear to me that you guys don't care. You don't, you don't, listen, most of you can't even look people in the face when they're speaking. But it falls on deaf ears. So I'm not going to spend my time up here talking about stats and things. And it's really, I just have a question, and it's not a question to anybody specifically, it's more rhetorical, but I think it's something that we, I just ask you all to think about, and the parents at home as well, is when does all of this end? I mean, you made a great point. It's parents, like, I don't even know what the inside of my child's school looks like. When are we going to end this? When are we going to end this remote? When are we going to end masks, all of it? When does it end? I mean, my child is in second grade, so she's like the class of 2032, I guess, somewhere around there. If I don't, if I choose as her parent not to give her this vaccine, do you see her walking across her graduation in a mask? Is that what we see? Is she going to be six feet apart? You know, is the principal going to be six feet apart in her high school graduation from everybody? I mean, and that makes it seem ridiculous, but I don't think it is anymore to ask that question. And I encourage you guys to think about, is that what you want for your children? I know some of you have children in the district, some of you don't, some of you have grandchildren, some of you don't have kids yet, maybe you will. But do you care about what it's going to mean for them? I mean, I don't think you guys understand the implications of your decisions. And I guess for me, I just really hope that you guys are thinking, because the goal, if you haven't noticed, the goalpost keeps moving. First, it was two weeks to flatten the curve, then it was until we had a vaccine, then it was till all the adults were vaccinated, and now it's when everybody's vaccinated, then maybe we can think about taking the precautions away. So if you can't see where this is headed, where there's no off-ramp. And we're just concerned parents for our children, that's all. I know we get upset, and there's, you know, emotions are high, but we care about our kids. And right now, I don't think you guys fully understand and appreciate what kids are going through in this district. Some kids, yes, are fine. Parents will say it, they're fine. That's great. I'm happy for those kids. But some kids are not okay. And it's because of the decisions that you were making, and I think this situation is going to require a hero. Somebody's going to have to step up and say, this is ridiculous, we are going back to normal. Somebody's going to have to do it. So is that going to be you all? I hope so, for our sake. I mean, you guys turn on a college football game on a Saturday? We're living in an alternate universe. There's 100,000 people screaming together with no precautions. They're tailgating, there's kids. It seems like only states where there's high, you know, teachers' union affiliation and people getting grant money from the federal government so we can participate in certain programs, so we get more money. That's what this seems to be about. So I just want to point that out and just ask you all to please think about the future of our children and what this really looks like. Because we're almost two years into this, and I feel like we're moving backwards. I can't even enter the doing to check out my kid from class. It's like I entered a jail, I'm walking up to a jail. Me and another mother are sitting there like, why are we not allowed in? The person's acting like I have a plague. I had a mask on, had a mask on, respect the rules, fine. Didn't even get to go into the building. No idea what my kid's school looks like. That's unacceptable. And I don't think you guys understand why, where our anger and vitriol comes from. It's because I am afraid of what your decisions are doing to my child, and it's going to affect her for the rest of her life. So I just ask that you please ask yourselves, when does this end? Thank you.
My name is Dan Sues. I live on Chorstein Street, and I just have a question to ask every single one of you. Is the Tewksbury school system receiving federal funds for implying CDC guidelines for schools? That's a question.
Mr. Malone?
Almost all districts in Massachusetts receive federal funding.
Right. Are you receiving additional funding to use CDC guidelines?
Yes.
No, we get funding to implement COVID measures. We have nothing specific to CDC guidelines.
Okay. You moved the meeting from the school to here so we could be maskless. This is political theater, and it's absolutely pathetic. You guys are all looking down, you can't look at anybody in the eye, and you're playing games, and you know it. This is unacceptable.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Denise Frost. I live at 9 New Jersey Road. This is only my second time that I've been to a school committee meeting, I'm embarrassed to say. I don't have any kids in the school system anymore. I want to thank you for the service that you've provided. But I also have a question, kind of along the lines of the money. I saw that there's money to be appropriated next fiscal year for COVID relief funds, and I'm wondering, kind of along the lines of, we're thinking in 2022 of using COVID relief funds that you've received this year. How much is out there? Why aren't you using it now? Or maybe you are. I'm just kind of curious, where the money's coming from, why we're holding it and using it for next year.
Sure, I'll take that, Chris. We're not holding any money. The state and, I believe, the federal government has allowed allocations to go beyond because COVID has lasted longer than they thought. So the money that would need it to be allocated this year is being used, and any leftover money can be used in the following year or two years. Superintendent Malone, I believe?
Right. There's a series of ESER grants, there's three ESER grants. Right, there's a series of ESER grants, there's three ESER grants, each one of them have a separate timeline of their expenditures. So, the application process for ESER III, which is what you're talking about, goes into 2022, 2023. We are currently using expenditures for ESER I. There was a CV, help me out today, CV-
CVRF.
CVR grant, it was the first grant that came out. We've used expenditures out of that. The town also gets similar grant money, if they apply for it as well. But there's a minimum of four separate grants out there. They, they all have separate timelines in which those expenditures, we can't expend anything out of ESER III right now.
Okay.
It's, so.
And are there constraints? You can only use it for certain things? And is it all accounted for? Do you have to send something back before you get the money? Do we have the money and we can spend it?
The grant process has assurances of accepting the money that you are assuring that you're going to spend it on that, and then there's an audit on the backend to ensure that you actually expended it in the areas you said you were going to spend it on.
Okay. And I have no idea, all the things that you all have had to go through to implement safety measures, but I'm assuming this is all for deep cleaning, Plexiglas, all the things, PPE?
Ventilators.
Ventilators?
Significant.
The air system?
Yes, significant investment, two, about $200,000, Mr. Libby? It was a lot of things.
Initially, air purifiers, MRF-13 filters, PPE, a lot of elements around that, and the initial grant funding.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate the information.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
My name is Lisa Wilson, living on Lake Hurst Drive in Tewksbury. I wanted to bring up a point for you guys to consider as we're looking at possibly requiring vaccinations on children. If we look at the case counts in Tewksbury from when this began to now, there's quite a lot of Tewksbury residents and children that have already had COVID, right? Quite a lot, if we just add them up every month since this began, right? So, there's a whole bunch of residents and children that have natural immunity. So, are those, are those children and residents going to be forced to vaccinate when they already have natural immunity? That doesn't make any sense. I'd also like to make, that's one point to consider. Another point I would like to, for you guys to consider, is that, you know, disallowing parents to be involved in the school or to come into the school, we have, we have all heard reports of things going on where teachers are putting, some teachers are putting stickers and other things on their door that have, you know, pronouns and, you know, different gender identity and race theory and this sort of thing that are, they're posting on the walls in, in the areas that the children are, young children. And the parents are not allowed to come in and see what their children are being exposed to. And I think the, the lack of Christian and patriotic values in our, that are being, that the teachers are being allowed to demonstrate to our children without us being able to even go in and see that as an issue that needs to be addressed, right? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, for our approval of minutes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021, regular school committee meeting?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the September 22nd, 2021, regular school committee meetings. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And Mrs. Garabedian, our submission and payment of bills as well, please.
Remove the school department payroll for the period ending to be approved and certified the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,420,308.48. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending September 30th, 2021, on the amount of $1,420,308.48. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. See unanimous vote. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Malone for his superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have some very good news in regards to the North Street interim principal search. We put on a hiring process with the search committee, conducted several interviews, and the number one candidate that came out of that process has signed a contract with Tewksbury. Ms. Pranima Demorius, currently a principal in Framingham, has extensive experience both in teaching and as an administrator. And we're very proud to have her come on board. We're finalizing the details of when she'll be able to start, hopefully by November 1st. And also, a very big thank you to all the administrators in the district who have supported the North Street by being present at half-day intervals at the North Street to support the students and the teachers, and that will continue until the new principal arrives and starts. But certainly, that is great news. Also, pleased to announce the resumption of the Tewksbury Royal High School National Honor Society Tutoring Service. This is a great student-to-student tutoring ability, typically occurs on Tuesday evenings and Friday mornings. Some of it will be virtual, some of it will be in person, but we're very excited to continue that. And it supports a lot of students, not only at the high school, but in our lower grades as well. If parents or others have, want to know more information, they can contact their building principals to connect on that. Just a reminder that our executive session minutes for the 2021 school year are now available for release, subject to redaction. And again, Jack Stabin did a great job at that Apple Fest fundraiser that's going to be going on on October 30th at Tewksbury Royal High School from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's just a huge event for our district, a huge fundraiser for the high school, a lot of local craft and fair, and it's a great place for activities to have fun, and it's a great way to spend the day with the family. So, we hope people will turn out for that. Also, a reminder that DESC advisory came out regarding concerted effort to eliminate the use or reduction of time-out rooms. Certainly, we'll go through that document, a lot of the interventions and preventive measures that are described in that advisory. We are already taking part in, but it's good information to have and to look through. We're desperately looking out for parents and community members to help us with some open positions we have, whether they have relatives or friends that might be interested, whether it be in the nursing field, in the contact tracing component, or as classroom aides. We have quite a few positions open that people have just not returned to. Hats off to Tewksbury Transit, who's just done an excellent job of maintaining transportation. Many districts around us are not having as good a luck with their bus company. So, a big thank you to Tewksbury Transit for maintaining all of our transportation. But again, if people are aware of individuals who might be looking for a position like this, please look on SchoolSpring or contact the Center of School, and we'll, we'll certainly help you out with that. We'll continue on with school safety, in specific to bus evacuation drills that we'll be conducting throughout October. We also had our annual meeting with the Tewksbury Police Department leadership in regards to our current School Resource Officer, MOU. We were joined by the leadership of the Tewksbury Fire Department as well. Kind of talked about planning for the district's security team moving forward for this year in hopes that we can set up some significant drills at the schools to support safety. So, we'll continue to work on, on that piece as well. And just a reminder that this week, well, actually, October 10th was World Mental Health Day. So, certainly something we want to focus on with all the activities going on in the world and all the elements that we want to look at. It certainly, we want to support all of our students and families who certainly have mental health issues. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you three.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. I might also add that we did send an email home to all parents. We're in desperate need, can you hear me? Okay. We're in desperate need of day-to-day subs as well. So, anyone, anyone who is available to day-to-day substitute for us, whether it be an aide or a teacher, we are certainly in need of your help. Last week, we sent out our annual SEAL of Biliteracy Letter, a required process in our SEAL program. The SEAL of Biliteracy honors students at graduation that are literate in two or more languages. One must, of course, be English Language Arts or English, as demonstrated through exam proficiency. The SEAL of Biliteracy Letter has been posted on our website. We urge all parents and students who are interested in this honor to look at the letter and click on the live links to learn more about the program. Last Friday, October 8th, was an early release day for our students, but a workshop day for our teachers. You can see from the list I provided in your consent agenda that there were several curriculum-related trainings, specifically on some of our new curriculum implementations, as well as new programs that our nurses are using in our guidance department and our behavior specialists. We had specific training for our aides and for our Delta T aides. And then, what you'll see, the preponderance of our PD was in training our PLC leaders. This started with a full two-day training on Monday and Tuesday, September 27th and 28th, where we're working with a consultant to train our PLC leaders to improve their leadership of their PLC, specifically through the use of the instructional cycle, looking at student data, outlining what they want to see as goals, what the data shows, and then adjusting what impact, what in their instructional practice had impact on those goals. That instructional cycle will improve the more our teachers are able to collectively work together on identifying which practices are having the impact that they're looking for. So, this is an, this is a full-year goal of ours and aligned with our acceleration roadmap, which you heard at the beginning of the school year. And we look forward to working with that consultant throughout the remainder of this school year and our PLC leaders. It was very well-received and very engaging. We received very high praise from our teachers on the results of this training from Friday. Okay, today was PSAT testing for our students at the high school. So, grades, students in grades 10 and 11 were all invited to take the PSAT during the school day. 354 students participated, 174 juniors and 180 sophomores. We spent on the PSAT, because we pay for this assessment for our students, thankfully to the commitment of our school committee, approximately $6,400. Because of the need for in-school proctors, seniors students were off cam, off-campus on school-related business, specifically planning for postgraduate activities, college visits, common application filings, scholarships, scholarship searching. And then those who are not planning on attending college were utilizing Naviance for career exploration activities. And then the highlight of our day is our freshman students and grade, the grade nine students participated in our annual Greater Lowell Indian Cultural Association curriculum. Glicker comes in each year and trains and instructs our students on different topics of Native American history and current life. Those topics include spirituality, society, roles of men, women, children, and elders, perceptions of Native American life in the past and now, and then a craft, where students participate in creating a Native American necklace and learn what the importance of that type of regalia is. It was truly a very relevant and successful day for all. I think it's important to thank the Tewksbury Royal High School administration, and especially Brian Elwood, who really helps work together and connects with Chief Eagle Rising, Mr. Tom Libby. We meet with him annually, he helps adjust our curriculum around relevant and authentic topics for Native American history, and will continue to work with us for our elementary school history wall. And that concludes my updates at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Just going to open up to my colleagues, if any questions. Mr. Passons?
I'm just curious, I just want to hear more about observable impact for the PD.
Sure. Well, in the instructional cycle, you know, as a teacher, right, we set our goals, we look at what do we want our students to be able to do. It's not always standards-related, it may be social-emotional learning. And what will we want to observe students doing to show their success in that area, whether it's curriculum-related or, as I said, SEO? What will our teachers do to achieve those goals? How will they measure they're meeting them? And then they need to identify which of those practices actually had that impact. So, we're looking for the observational impact we want, we're setting plans, and then going back to see if what we did, time is precious. If something isn't having the impact we want, we replace that with something else. So, it's a cycle, and the instructional cycle, we usually focus on data and instruction. But what we don't always know is what are we doing that's really making, you know, getting the achievement we want or the results we want.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passons. Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions, but I'd just like to comment that I'm very pleased to hear that the district does support the PSATs financially for people. I think that's a, a great thing. I hope we continue to do that.
We have the committee to thank. That was a commitment of this committee a few years back, and we've continued to offer PSATs during the school days, so we get the maximum amount of participation.
That's great.
Mrs. DeMoss?
No, no questions tonight.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I don't have any either, thank you. Like to turn it over at this time to Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening will focus on an agenda item in your packet under new business. It's actually the last item in the packet. Just wanted to keep everyone updated and aware that we're kicking off the 2223 budget season shortly here in the district. It feels like we just got started with this year, but already time to start thinking about next year. We have some unique challenges we'll be facing that encompass this budget season that we're looking at, the greatest being moving into a new elementary school that's currently scheduled for December of 2022, and how that's going to impact the budget related to staffing and all sorts of areas, teaching, aides, administration, custodial, cafeteria. There's a lot of tentacles as far as our staffing goes, how it's going to impact our supplies and materials, utilities, transportation. Will have a big impact on our transportation when we move those students from three different sites into one location. We've updated our transportation software, so we can offer, it'll be a more flexible product and allow us to do some modeling on transportation so that we're moving forward with the, the most effective transportation we can. And then, just the logistics of the actual move, we want to make sure we have moving expenses covered within this budget. So, also, unique to this budget, the appropriate use of our COVID grant funding to maximize the benefits to students and staff, which extends through September of 2024, that COVID grant funding. Ongoing collective bargaining is still happening at this time, so that will impact the budget next year. And our state and local revenues, which drive how much we have at our disposal, really unknown at this time, but estimates are, are pretty positive. Nothing seems like it's going to go too badly in the wrong direction, so we're hopeful there. We'll start meeting with department heads and principals throughout November to start establishing their wants and needs for the upcoming school year. By December 17th, we'll ask principals to submit their top two priorities. It's a two-way communication. Anything programmatic or personnel-related goes through the superintendent's office. And by this time, typically, the town manager has given us the target that the town feels we're going to be allocated on the school budget, so we can start thinking about decisions that, of what goes into our LEA budget, what could be funded through one-time funds or grants or revolving accounts, goes on a wish list for future funding or, or further research, and, or sometimes items just aren't meant for the- and, or sometimes items just aren't meant for the district at this time, so they kind of just go away. On or before January 14th, we have to submit a budget to the town manager per the town bylaw. It's, the requirement is a simple three numbers. We need to supply them with an operating budget, a salary budget, and a capital outlay budget. We do supply account-level detail at that time to support all those numbers. January 12th, we'll be holding a budget workshop to be held at Tucksbury High School in LG One. February 9th and March 9th, we also do public hearings on the upcoming budget. During that process, we still do make some tweaks to the budget as information, new information becomes available, whether it's on revenues, grants, needs of the district. Things are constantly changing, so we adjust the budget accordingly. Date to be determined, usually in April, we meet with the finance committee and present where we are with the budget at that point. They usually have some valid questions about our spending and questions about our programs as well. And then May 4th of '22 is the final proposed budget gets approved at Town Hall. That's the actual act that grants the district its budget for the upcoming year. That's pretty much the budget timeline we'll be looking at for the 2223 budget. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Any questions, Mr. Stadman?
No.
Mrs. Demos?
Dave, do you foresee the transportation? I know you said the software is up and running, but we're centralizing the transportation. Would you think we'll have any sort of a budget cut to that? Do you think it will maybe be able to streamline any of the busing because of it coming to the new elementary building?
Right now, no, because we're still running the, we'll still be running the Heathbrook and the Dewing schools at the same time as the, as the new elementary school. That's the current plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're still transporting the same number of students, it's just they're kind of grouped differently.
Okay.
And we're still covering the whole town. We're actually worried it might cost more in buses. We're hoping this new software will offer us some solutions that we may not think of without a computer working for us.
And then I missed when you said that we get the number from the town manager. What, around what date do we get that?
It's typically early, middle of December.
Okay.
But they've, local, I mean, the state budget's usually approved at that point, and they'll have a good look at last year's revenues and be able to project what our local revenue sources look like.
And then I know at the elementary school building, we talked about, you know, ordering and staffing and supplies and things like that, hoping that maybe, you know, as we get closer to December, we'll have some conversations amongst the principals of, as far as, you know, consolidating from the two buildings to one, you know, and looking at the itemized list of what we have for supplies, what's needed, what's not needed, you know, before we start the ordering process.
Yep, absolutely. You know, a lot of the supplies, materials, furnitures, and fixtures come with the project.
Right.
And, you know, whatever does not will fill in with what we have from the schools.
Right, and by then we should have that checklist ready for them to what needs to come and what needs to stay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mrs. Garabedian?
I have no questions. Shannon actually addressed a couple of mine, so that's great.
Thank you. I have no questions.
And I'm good as well. Thank you, Mr. Libby, and appreciate the update now as opposed to the new business. With that, that brings us to tonight's consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns with tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to committee reports, we're going to start with Mrs. Demos, the Elementary School Building Committee, please.
So, our Elementary School Building Committee, next meeting is on the 21st this month. We are moving forward into the design and the colors and all that fun stuff. We're on time and on budget, and things are looking positively.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And Mr. Posens, the Tucksbury CPAC?
Yes. So, on the September 29th business meeting, membership discussed ideas for future workshops to support families receiving, support students receiving special education in their families. Some ideas presented included developing community and small friend support groups, managing anxiety, and working with the siblings of students with special needs to better understand and manage themselves. There's also an identified need for more support staff in district, and that ties in with the need for substitute teachers and more aides. This isn't just a Tucksbury issue, this is a nationwide, every school in the country Every school is desperate for help, and there are plenty of substitute positions opening in district that pay $105 daily. And the more bodies in a school, the better attention students are going to receive. And then, lastly, the CPAC communicated great praise for all the people involved in reconfiguring and optimizing student pickup and drop-off at the schools in town. Very high praise. So, that was great to hear, that that's better, and hopefully that line is a lot shorter than it was last year.
Thank you, Mr. Posens. And Mrs. Garabedian, and the Wellness Advisory Committee?
So, our next meeting is on November 10th, and again, we're still kind of, you know, in the reformulating, I think, after COVID, so if there are any community members that would like to join, I think they have a couple of seats for community members, if anybody's interested, and just reach out. That's where we're at.
Great. And how, if someone is interested, how could they do that?
Reach out to me, through you, the chair.
Great.
Through the district administration.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Stadman for our Policy Subcommittee?
We did not have a meeting last month, but we do have Item 15. If I can roll onto that, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Policy change proposal led adoption. Policy changes for revision to TPS policy, first reading is JKAA, physical restraint of students. Again, that's first reading. And the second, policy recommendation for revision to TPS policy on second and final reading is ACAB for harassment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, are we looking, just for clarity, for a vote tonight on the second and final reading? For the ACAB harassment?
Yes.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the board at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve the ACAB harassment policy as presented tonight. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. It's a unanimous vote, and we will be having our second and final reading on the JKAA physical restraint in students' policy at our next meeting. With that, we're going to turn it over to Mrs. Regan for our enrollment. Old Business?
Superintendent Malone, I think, is going to start.
I'll start out just, Mr. Chair, on the overall enrollment per our October 1 report. That October 1 report is a significant date for DESE that establishes our student population for the year, even though obviously our student population fluctuates during the year, that is the number that DESE utilizes to measure our number of students. Currently on October 1, we're showing 3,191 students. That's up six students from last year. We're still, if we look all the way back to 2019, we were over 3,300 at that time. So, the overall projections are consistent with what we've seen in our 25-year projections, which was a slow decline, a leveling off. We hope we're hitting to that, or we assume we're hitting to that leveling off piece, and then possibly a slight incline. Some of those, Ms. Regan will talk a little bit about where the pockets of our student population impact us, but just in general, some things to note around that 3,191 students. Some numbers, particularly at the high school now, is filling up with some lower student-sized classes. So, we have three, the freshmen, the sophomore, and the juniors currently all under 200 students. We haven't seen that in a while. That has been a small group of students that has kind of come along over time, so we knew that would hit the high school range eventually. A blip is at fifth grade with 267 students. We've been following that. That's a big number. We really heavily identified that in second grade, watched it in third and fourth, made some adjustments in third and fourth in regards to that total grade level. Now that they're at the Ryan, it's actually a help that they're all in one building. It helps us manage those pieces, but that is, that's a big class that we're going to have to watch. And as always, we keep a strong eye on those pre-K and K numbers to try to influence what the first grade's going to look like in that first mandated year of school. Our K numbers this year were 229. That's actually lower than it was last year, which is a little bit interesting. So, we'll have to watch that number as it transitions to first grade next year to see if we get a sharp increase when it goes into first grade. So, those are kind of some of the bigger numbers and the trend over the past three years, but I'll hand it over to Ms. Regan to talk a little bit about how that impacts class size at the schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. When I talk about class size, I want to talk in two terms. One, whole class, graduating class. And Ms. Garabedian, you had asked a clarifying question last meeting about the freshman class. At the time, it was 177. You can see, as of October 1st, we're at 174. You can see just the, you know, ups and downs of some of these whole class sizes. We see a blip or a rise in grade eight, grade five, and grade one. And if you remember, we had many more kindergarten registrations last year. We were talking about this at the beginning of last year. That surprised us. So, that, that class is, you can see currently our kindergarten at 229. Some are up, some are down. This is very consistent, though, with the numbers NESDEC gives us over time. So, we're not seeing any big surprises, but yes, overall, we have some lower graduating class sizes. And then your question was, did we see more students leave the district in grade nine? In fact, no. We had 87 students in '21 go to Tech, Charter, or Tecca, and this school year, we had 77. So, we proportionally had less that went out of district or did not attend Tucksbury Public, Tucksbury Memorial High School. If you look on the backside of that report, you're going to see the class sizes at each of our grade levels and at each of our schools. What's really, I mean, I can't tell you how just how proud and I want to thank and praise the committee of many years past for the commitment to keeping class sizes low in Tucksbury. Every single one of our classes in PK through eight are under 25. Most of them are under 20, or many of them are under 20. I do want to draw your attention to the PK classes at the Dewing, because it looks like, wait a minute, why are they 26 and 25? There are actually two separate groups of students under that one teacher's name, because there's a morning set of students and then an afternoon set of students. So, theoretically, if you just look at Ms. Hines' PK class, those are two classes of 13 students. Okay? So, those numbers are a little deceiving when you look at them like that, but again, I just want to remind you that because of the commitment of the committee, we are at every single class, PK through eight, under 25, as I said, several under 20. When you, I don't, you don't have the high school class report here, because we, we wait generally until November, December to really look at those settling numbers as kids change classes. But what I can tell you is we have 421 class sections over the full school year. I counted 20 of them that are at 26 to 29 currently, 20 out of 421, which leaves us with all of the rest of those sections at 25 or under, some as low as just a handful of students, and we still run the class. Now, we don't like to see the whole graduating class dip to 174, but it is the way it is, and it certainly contributes to lower class sizes amongst all of our courses at the high school as well. So, our class sizes are so wonderful right now, and I just have to keep saying that because with the new school, we know we can balance out, for example, a 20, a third-grade class of 20 and a third-grade class of 16 to even be more consistent, but we're in great shape, and this report shows us, as of October 1st, where we fell in class sizes across the district.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No questions, and thank you for the clarification.
No questions.
I'm just, for my own curiosity, when I see the, like, Lynn Ionachi's at the center of school, it says 34. We're talking an AM 1717?
Actually, that, that's a great question, Ms. Demos. That's our community service preschool. That's running with three or four different classes at any given time, but you're right, there's AM, there's PM, there's all day, and that's a total student population amongst all the varieties of community service preschool.
When I saw CS, I took it as the center school, where my daughters went to preschool. I thought it was still like, you know, Miss Donna.
And there's multiple staff members attached to that.
So, I was a little uncomfortable with that, but now that makes me feel a little bit better.
Right. Ms. Ionachi does not teach all 34 herself.
I know she's a wonderful teacher, but 34 is an awful lot of...
It's big.
And are we thinking that, looking at these K numbers at Heathbrook versus Dewing, that will be first grade next year, after our moving the grades two to four kiddos out, do we need to be looking at those, you know, roads that are somewhat at that reconfigurations as far as looking to say, you know, if we're leaving the Heathbrook numbers at such and such and not making them really sort of more comparable? It's just something I want to put out there. You know, I'm not sure that we're at that point just yet, but where I'm looking at some of these pre-K, K, and one kiddos that are high 20s at one school and 15 in another school. When we're moving those two to four babies out, I think that we need to kind of look at what's left there and say, is there justification that we need to be looking to see? Is there any reconfiguration needed?
And that would be a great, and once we get moved into the new school, look at those pieces. One thing we will gain as a result of that move is room in both the Dewing and the Heathbrook, which is a challenge.
Right.
Right now, particularly at the Dewing.
Right.
So, room won't be an issue, which then theoretically, hopefully, class size won't be an issue. However, what, if the trend continues, you do have one, and one school is much larger physically than the other school, but you will have one larger school, is what is the better way to move forward with that? Should redistricting be considered? Should we, you know, look at total resources expenditures, all those kind of things? I think that would be, and we'd be in a great position then to do it without looking at a reconfigure or a redistricting. That wouldn't, would have a smaller impact at that point if it occurred.
And when I, when I say redistricting, reconfiguration, restructuring, I mean, you know, we could even be doing that by moving staff members.
Right.
Or moving students. I don't mean one or the other. I mean, kind of look at it as a blank slate and see what means the needs of the students.
And we've done the staff member move in instances over the past couple of years where necessary, but right, that's, that's a fairly easy move.
Right.
Particularly when we have the space.
Right.
If we, you know, we have to look at all of our schools at this point, and if we got into a scenario where the class numbers got up and we wanted to split the class, the next question is, where are we going to put the class?
Right.
Where's the space? That won't be an issue once the second grade comes out of the Heathbrook and Dewing.
Right. Okay. I just, I wanted to kind of put that out there for the record, that I think we should probably be more proactive instead of reactive, and kind of having those thoughts as we move forward with this building project.
Can I give you some, Demos? Mr. Stadman?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
And I don't have any questions either. Gets us to the MCAS update. Mrs. Regan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. What I'm going to first focus on, this is informational only, but is the first page in your report, which is an overview, MCAS achievement level report. I tried to make it a little easier to read and not to stare your eyeballs in only one direction, but I highlighted some areas for us to be very proud of, and then keeping in mind that the data we're looking at is our entire grade level, both remote and in-person students. So, I just want to make that clear as we look at the achievement levels. Everywhere I've highlighted in that first column, in meeting or exceeding expectations, the district versus the state, everywhere I've highlighted shows that we outperformed the state in meeting or exceeding expectations. I'm going to pop over to the next column for a minute that I highlighted, which is student participation rate. And I think if you remember, I alluded a little to, we have a lot to be proud of. And one of those areas I was very, just thrilled to see was the participation rate. At the state average in grades 3 through 8, the average is 93 to 97 percent tops. And you can look at grades 3 through 8, we had from 97 to 100 percent average, so we certainly topped the state average there. In high school, the participation rate at the state average was 89 to 90 percent, and you can see that we were at 97 and 98 percent. And in those grade levels, students had to come into the school to test if they were remote learners. So, where do we see some need and some growth? Clearly, grades 4 and grades 7, if we just look at not meeting the achievement levels of the state average, those two grade levels show us the greatest learning loss when compared to our state comparison. So, this is comparing us to the state levels first, okay? I just want to remind people that the participation was very tricky last year, and the state extended that window till almost the end of the school year. DESI also shortened the assessment so that students could, because of our inconsistent instruction during hybrid learning, that students weren't, we weren't taking that much instructional time away from students to assess them. And we had a modified competency determination for our graduation class, and MCAS was made voluntary for our 11th graders or 12th graders who may want to try to participate in the Adams and Copplet grants. I'm not going to go through all the rest of these graphs and pages, but now what we're doing is comparing ourselves to ourselves over historical look at the data. And where I wrote "new," that's because that was the first year the next generation assessment was given at that particular grade level. So, there's only two years of historical data to compare. And what I, what I'll highlight for you through the grade levels is that we saw some real great areas to be proud of against our own historical comparison, and particularly grade 10 English Language Arts. We saw our students holding very steady, even with a limited instructional day, that they were, they did very well against our previous achievement at that grade level in that content area. Grade 8 English Language Arts is another area to look at, where we feel very proud of our students and our teachers. Grade 8 Science and Tech Engineering, grade 6 English Language Arts, grade 5 English Language Arts, and for our youngest students that take the MCAS, our 3rd graders, they did amazing. We're very, very proud of the achievement of all of our students, but where are the areas that we now look at learning loss against our historical data? And there is clearly a trend. Math was an, was a content area that our students struggled in statewide, and we even see our own learning loss at our schools. Even though these are different sets of students, it speaks to the inconsistency of our instruction during a very interrupted and disrupted school year. So, what do we do with that data? Oh, let me first remind you that the changes in our achievement levels did not impact our accountability as a district. The state held districts harmless from decreasing our accountability status. In 2019, and currently, because we just maintained our 2019 accountability status, we are a district that was not in need of assistance or intervention, and we're making substantial progress towards our targets. Those targeted areas, if you look at this first page, achievement, student growth, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency, chronic absenteeism, and advanced coursework, we will receive new targets for those areas and at-risk subgroups based on our '21 MCAS data. So, we'll have new targets to shoot for. So, what do we do with the data? Well, DESI encourages schools to focus on using the results for diagnostic improvement purposes. You'll hear me use that term a lot, learning loss. In fact, that is a focus of some of those ESR grant monies that we are using. And we reached out to parents certainly to give us some feedback. Tutoring, extra help, the buses after school. Unfortunately, well, unfortunately, we're not able to put all of our late buses out. We're just not finding the drivers for them, but regardless of whether we are able to do buses, we're looking at targeting those learning loss areas for supports after the school day. Our principals and our teachers, those PLCs, are digging deeper into the data. How do we look at those standards that we saw significant dips amongst ourselves over history so we can strengthen our instruction? Why do we use observable impact? We're not just shooting darts in the dark. We need to know where we want to go and what are we going to do to do that, and that's why we're training our PLCs leaders to lead that focus. So, our principals will continue to dig into this data with their teachers. Remember, we purchased Otis. It's a data analytical tool that looks at not only big data like MCAS and attendance and behavior, but also our regular day-to-day formative data. Because perhaps a student or a grade level just, we're not hitting the mark maybe instructional, you know, that was just one day. But when we look at the day-to-day data we're collecting, that regular progress monitoring, that's when we see, is this an issue for the child, for our instruction, or the whole grade? And that's the instructional cycle that we have our teachers looking at. It starts with MCAS, and then it continues with the regular day-to-day data. And then eventually, as we start grouping students and we realize the student needs more, that's when we'll start implementing those extra help in after-school sessions.
Any questions?
I have one question. The students that you're mentioning in terms of having this additional offering for learning after school, learning loss, are you identifying them with the use of Otis? Is that...
We can, very quickly. In fact, usually, we, we have to wait for specific data reports through the state, but because we dumped all of our MCAS data into Otis, we can quickly, at the push of a button, find out all of the students who need or at the, well, that failed. Immediately, we get the list, that we then target for a specific in-school help so that they can retest.
Okay.
Okay? And then at the other grade levels, we can group students even down to a single standard. You know, we will mediate most of it in the class as the goal. That's that piece of that acceleration roadmap, but clearly, we're going to need some additional tutoring and help groups, and we'll know by targeting the data through Otis, who, who they are and where the targets are needed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carabedian.
I have a few, few questions. Is the 2019 MCAS and the 2021 MCAS, are those tests any different?
Yes. They were shortened for 2021. So, where we may have seen more items around a specific standard, this year we saw less. So, this is why it's important that, for example, if we see a certain math standard, you know, that the majority of students fell below meeting that expectation, now we need the regular data day-to-day in the class. Was it a one-in, one-off, or is it truly based in the instruction wasn't robust enough around that standard in the limited time we had with them? So, this is where formative assessment, you know the term, as a teacher, let's just say, regular progress monitoring around those standards is imperative around those lowest-performing standards in the big data.
Excellent. My next question, so when you look at the percentile grade of meeting expectations, exceeding them, just, just for clarification, DESI will take a raw score, change it into a percent, and then they'll put that score somewhere comparable, like they will compare it to scores across the state. Am I getting that right?
I think you're talking about student growth percentile, maybe? That we look at achievement and then like achievement levels of like, there's a, there's a complex of a formula that goes into that, but if you look at the average student growth percentile, it's the, next to the last column, what you're looking for in a range there is growth between 40 and 60. Over 60 percent growth is significantly higher than expected, under 40 percent is lower than expected. Where, when you look at the achievement levels, it's not surprising to see, especially in the area of math, which we've already said, has been the, the content area with the largest learning loss, you can see the lowest student growth averages are all in math. So, what we know is that students didn't grow is expected, it's under 40 percent. It clearly, in my opinion, is, is a result of our limited time with them and that, how was instruction remotely? Remember, we also had some non-math teachers teaching math, so that students had licensed teachers in front of them in the remote learning class. So, there's a lot of factors. I mean, I think we have a lot to be proud of, and we certainly have a lot of work to do around. And remember, the acceleration roadmap that we shared with you and those goals, it's not a one-and-done year. It's going to be over a few years to really address the learning loss we saw during 2021.
For sure. And I agree with that sentiment. And then just my last question, you know, the ESR 3 grant application, that's, that's in progress. Could you maybe speak on any interventions this year to address that learning loss, whether they're Acceleration Academies?
Sure. We definitely, the Acceleration Academies was a summer program, and that was a specific grant money that we received to do that. But ESR 3 grant was, as we talked, there's been several iterations focused on safety measures in our schools as well as learning loss measures that we'll put into place, supports. We finished the grant application on time on October 4th. I'm looking at Mr. Libby because we spent a lot of time, as did he, with Assistant Business Manager Ms. Osborne. We took those highest survey areas around learning loss, and we targeted, whether it's additional support personnel in the school, additional, our English language learner population has doubled in the last year, so we know we need more supports for that at-risk subgroup. So, we targeted specific groups with flooding them with more support, whether it's personnel, time, after-school programming, aperture, that DESI SEL program we talked about, how do we measure SEL? So, we put, we put in as much as we could all around those learning loss, even though the requirement of the grant was at a minimum 20 percent. We focused, I can't remember the final percent, but more than 20 percent on learning loss.
It was like 46, I think, in that ballpark.
Yeah.
46 percent.
Yeah, glad to hear that. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Ms. Demos?
Yes, I just, you know, this is great data for us to have as a district. It'll, it'll drive our decisions and our instruction and reach the students where they need to be met. I just want to make sure that we are commending the families, the students, the teachers, the admin, the parents, everyone that worked with these kiddos last year. It was a year unlike anything that they have ever gone through. We had teachers that were teaching remotely, we had teachers that were, gym teachers that were stepping in to help the math, and we have to make sure that we take these scores. The fact that we are substantially progressed, we are making substantial progress towards our goal is huge. There are many districts in Massachusetts that didn't do so, so we should be commending each other for working together and striving for the best for these students. It's definitely not where we want to be, but it's definitely, we're in a good place, and we just need to take and be reflective of this data and use the decision, use it as, to drive our decisions of, you know, do we need to supplement our math program? You know, do we need to have more interventionists in math? Do we need to look at our time on learning in the math? We need to take and look at, how are we going to meet these students where they are? The data is so rich that the teachers are going to be able to tell you which strand it is, and then look at our math instruction and say, wow, you know what? That isn't addressed in our series. We need to supplement this. And it's going to be a learning curve, and we need to make sure that we're remembering to celebrate some of these successes as well, but these kids have been through a lot, and we want to make sure that we're also saying to them, great job. You know, and the teachers will be supported with this data, knowing where they're going to start and move forward from.
So, Ms. Demos, through you, Mr. Chairman, if I will, I left this little post in here so I would not forget, and I did forget, I got lost in some of the questions.
It's okay.
But absolutely, we have to thank our students. What a difficult year, our staff, our parents, I mean, our staff, our teachers, and all the support staff.
Right.
And then our parents, who truly were partners.
Right.
Last year in teaching.
The families.
We had a lot of missed time due to quarantining and people that were sick and whatever the reason was.
Right.
And our parents really, we said it ad nauseam as we wrote letters, thank you for partnering with us, but we mean it, because it was really the support at home that was equally effective as the support at school, so.
So, I think that it's, it's great information for us to have as a district as we move forward into, you know, filling those learning gaps and moving our students in the right direction.
I agree.
Thank you to everyone out there that helped the students achieve what they did.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Demos. Ms. Stafford?
I don't have anything.
All right. I'm just going to piggyback, Ms. Demos, and say I'm looking forward to seeing what the district can put in place to really get those grade 3 kids, especially at that young age. Looking forward to seeing how we can help support them and get those scores up for the next year, so. That's all I have, and that brings us to the naming of the new elementary school. Ms. Regan, would you like to...
What you have, yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you will require a roll call vote tonight. You have all of the suggested names that came from the Elementary School Building Committee, and a new name actually was phrased two different ways, the Pleasant Street Elementary School or the Pleasant School or the Pleasant Elementary. One had street, one did not have street. Either way, that was a newer suggestion that came up through people reaching out to us through Tom White Pack and then to you as well, Mr. Chairman. So, as I said, these are the suggestions for names of the new school, and it will require a roll call vote from the committee.
Okay. With that, I'd like to, before I open up the floor, just a quick how we got here. Obviously, if you were here last September, we did make an announcement in accordance with the policy, as Ms. Regan said. She did reach out to the school councils and the school PACs. We made it readily available in the community. I know I talked to plenty of people that had all kinds of suggestions. The elementary school building project, they came to us. Ultimately, it's the school committee's authority to do the naming that brought us here to tonight. As Ms. Regan said, we only received one additional suggestion, and with that, I'd like to start with our vice chair to open up this discussion about the new name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I definitely did a lot of pondering on this naming of the school. I think that taking two schools and combining them into one new school is definitely something that is, we should be celebrating both sides of the town with. I do believe that we should be looking at a name of a school that is separate from the Trayhand and the North Street, so that it's, you know, starting new and starting fresh. I do think though, that I really am kind of grounded into the history of Tuxbury, and I think that we should be looking at, kind of taking this as a twofold, that we should be looking at naming the elementary school building itself, but I would put out to the committee that I would like to see the library or the central office pod or a section of the different parts of the building named in honor of maybe some historical pieces. You know, we, I worked, many of you know, I was 19 years at the Trayhand School, and we have Leah's Nook in the library that was dedicated due to one of the passings of one of our students that we had there. You know, do I think that it's, it's going to be something that moves on to this new school?
You know, do I think that it's going to be something that moves on to this new school? Probably not. But I do think that if we had, the library had a little plaque or a picture of the old Shawshin School that I went to as a student way back in the 70s here in Tewksbury, it may bring in the old and the new. So I think tonight, we're probably just have the time to speak to the name, but I would like to have some conversations to bring back to the Elementary School Building Committee about maybe naming different parts of the school in honor of different, maybe, you know, we have North Street wing or a Treyhan Library or... This is a conversation that I think probably is an agenda point to be put on for a future item. But I do think that in honor of some of the rich history here in Tewksbury, I'd like to have different parts of the building also named.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Carabine? Our clerk?
So I have given this quite a bit of thought as well. I've spoken to some community members who've had concerns about the name, thoughts about the name. I agree with Shannon in some senses that it's nice to dedicate a new building with a new identity. But I do think that where we are moving the people that are in the center school now into this building, I kind of like moving that name also to the new building in some way. I also think about our community and one of our resources in the town. I know the Treyhan was formerly named the Shawshin School. We have the Shawshin River in town, which is a tremendous, beautiful resource if you like canoeing and things like that. So I don't know. Somebody did suggest the Shawshin School, but again, we already had the Shawshin School. Other towns have a Shawshin School. I like the idea of using a resource in town like the Shawshin River and combining it with the center school. So the Shawshin Center Elementary was recommended, and I tend to like that a lot. I like the historical, you know, tie to it. The center school was also recommended to us by the Elementary School Building Committee. And those are just my initial thoughts to contribute to the discussion.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
Oh. You know, I'm a big history guy, antiques, all this other fun stuff. Want to preserve something, you know, we're tearing something down, my first idea is just to, you know, pull a plaque off and slap it on there. It's great if we want to recognize things like that. I'll try to make it short and sweet. So I just naturally gravitate towards the center school.
Mr. Parsons?
Naming a school is real hard. It's what you're really signaling is, you know, like what's important to the town, what's our town's identity. There's a lot of different recommendations here, but not a lot of number of people recommending them for that. Again, the context that we've been in for the past two years or so, not the brightest or most jovial. I just have a concern that this might not be the right context right now to name a school and put some actual meaning and power and unification from the community behind it. So I'm kind of torn, you know? That's where I'm at on it.
My comments, I, first of all, I'd like to thank the people that have been serving on that elementary school building project for years and years and their tireless work. It's wonderful to see what's going on there. It's going to be a great asset, not only to our town, but certainly to our students and our staff and everyone that's going to be in that state-of-the-art, safe building. So, you know, with that being said, I think there's some very good suggestions on here. I myself, I agree with my colleague Nick with regards to, this is a very difficult thing. I don't think names, I've been in this town 50 years and names come and go. I gravitate, like my colleagues have spoken to, about history and tradition. I think those things are very important. I do have some concern. I did get some emails about the Pleasant Elementary School. I thought that was a very nice name, but then I got to thinking, you know, the public safety person in me, or if there's an emergency or a medical emergency. We already have two schools on Pleasant Street. We're already having issues. They're not major issues, but people can't even find out where the football game is. God forbid there was ever a fire or a medical emergency or even worse. I would hate for some student or anyone in that school to call and say where I am on Pleasant Street, and now we have three different locations possibly that we're going to have to get emergency personnel to. So although, you know, I thought that name was appealing with all that other things being said, you know, the names for me really didn't do it. I do like, you know, I like the center school. I'm not opposed to the Shawshin Center School. I, you know, I think it does bring in the Shawshin River, which is a nice resource here in town, but that's, those were kind of my thoughts. Like I said, names come and go. I'm not sure that to name a school is really appropriate just because, you know, at a political time, someone may have passed within the last, you know, whatever it is, year or two years or three years. And then people are always going to wonder, you know, who's this person? Who's that person? So, you know, with that, that's, those are kind of my thoughts. I know, Mrs. Demos, certainly, we can, tonight, you know, if we're going to, I think we should just stick with the name, but we certainly can come back. It's well within the naming facilities. And I do think that's important if we have gymnasiums and hallways, that we could retain some of those other parts within the school that were taken down. But for tonight, you know, I think we should just try to focus on, you know, a name. I think that we can get a general consensus on.
Yeah.
And just for, if anyone's looking at this, the number of recommendations for the elementary, those were just the people on the Elementary School Building Committee. I know several websites put out their own surveys out there with this information, but those number of recommendations were just merely the people that serve on that Elementary School Building Committee, so.
Yeah, I definitely just think that we need to stick to something that represents Tewksbury as a whole. Having had Ms. Treyhan the year of her accident and going to the school that was the Shawshin and then our teacher not coming back, and then having the school renamed and explaining it for years, you know, who was Ms. Treyhan? You know, we had a connection to her because she was our teacher. And then the school was changed and we had the naming. I don't feel that, at this point, we should be looking at singling out names. I agree with you with that. But I think it should be something that conceptualizes what Tewksbury stands for or where even the location is. It's centrally located, that is like right here in the center of Tewksbury. So the Shawshin in the center are the two that I keep going in between. So if we were to combine them into one name, I would not be against that either. But I just think it needs to be timely. You know, we, on the elementary school building, have a timeline that we have to follow, and MSBA is awaiting our decision for the next step, so.
Okay. Mr. Stadman, any comments?
I still like the center school. My two cents.
Sure.
Yeah.
My only two cents on the center school is that I would like to be center elementary school because those of us that have been here for a long time, I, in my brain, think of the center school that we're knocking down to make a parking lot. So if we, if I could just be as bold as to say, you know, to add the elementary in there so that it differentiates it from the building that is no longer to our new building, I would be appreciative.
And Mr. Parsons?
We can name a school tonight. I'm okay with that. I agree, center elementary school with the Shawshin.
Center or?
Shawshin Center Elementary School.
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify what Ms. Carabine's comment was?
Sure.
Shawshin Center or Center Shawshin?
Well, I liked the Shawshin Center, and of course, the elementary would make more sense because you're referencing the type of school it is.
So what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
To name the new school, the Shawshin Center Elementary School?
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second for the Shawshin Center Elementary School to be the new name. Going to take a roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Carabine, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote? And the chair votes nay as well. With that, do I have any other motions?
I'll make a motion to, for the Center Elementary School to be the new name of the school.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to name the new school, the Center Elementary School. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Carabine?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. The new school will officially be named the Center Elementary School. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. And just quickly, for the people that are here and the people that are at home, this is a subcommittee of the selectmen that they saw fit, that they thought they needed and included us in the schools. They did have a seat, if someone would like to sit on it, from the school committee. There is also a seat administratively that Karen Baker O'Brien, who does all of our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, which I can tell you is very thorough in the school district, already serving on it. And with that, Mrs. Reagan, would you like to add anything else to the, with regards to this committee?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you hit the nail on the head. Ms. Baker O'Brien has been leading a wonderful group of teachers in, you know, helping make sure every one of our students and staff members feel welcome in our community.
Great. All right. I'll open it up for conversation and dialogue. Yeah, Mrs. Demos?
I have nothing to make.
All right. Mrs. Carabine?
I have nothing to say. I appreciate the opportunity for the school committee to participate in this. I personally don't have the time to participate in it, but I hope another one of my colleagues would.
Okay. Mr. Stadman?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Parsons?
I'm going to look for one of my peers to nominate me for that committee.
I will do that.
Don't look too happy.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to have Nick Parsons as our school committee representative for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee for Tewksbury.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any oppose? And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for your dedication and service on that. All right. With that, the committee school assignments, this was just a housekeeping issue. We had previously had two school committee members be part of the district leadership team. We have made a decision not to do that anymore, and Mr. Malone, who has quarterly meetings with the district security team, will instead present his findings at the appropriate quarterly school committee meetings. Mr. Libby, I assume your update was thorough early on in the presentation. Is there anything you need to add?
No, I stand and report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby. And school committee matters of interest will start to my right. Mr. Parsons?
I just want to reemphasize that we really need the Gadsden substitute teachers.
Thank you, Nick.
That's all I have, though.
Good call, Nick. Mrs. Carabine?
Just want to reiterate the October 30th Apple Fest that's happening. I hope people can show up and support the high school in that way.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Nothing to make.
And Mr. Stadman?
In case nobody heard, Apple Fest.
I was going to say, but I think it's all done.
That's all I got.
Good call. And I have nothing this evening, other than thanks for attending. Our future school committee dates are November 17th and December 8th. And our future subcommittee and advisory committee meeting dates, elementary school building, October 14th, November 18th. CPAC, October 21st, November 18th, December 16th. Tewksbury CPAC Subcommittee Safety to be determined. Wellness Advisory, November 10th, March 23rd. And the Policy Subcommittee, 15th. Did I say, John?
No, TBD.
Oh, okay. To be determined. I bet.
Yeah.
Okay. And do any one of my colleagues have any future agenda items? All right. Seeing that, Mrs. Demos?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting at, looks like, 8:08 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you for attending and good evening.